Good evening. The time of seven o'clock has arrived, and I think we are now past that time. I'd like to call to order the Village of Madison's Town Hall meeting for Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Craig, trustee Farr, trustee Harden, trustee Meeks, trustee Satchel, trustee Shorter.
Thank you. We want to get started. We have a pretty full agenda, and I want to make sure that we cover everything that we need to cover today. I want to make sure I mention to everyone, because when you have just a bit of a sound of a cold, people wonder, well, what do you have? I ever... You have to say this. I tested, I do not have COVID. I have a bit of a cold, and I'm, my voice is still hoarse, and I've been dealing with this for about the last five to seven days, so I'm getting better. I want to welcome all, and thank you for joining us at our Town Hall meeting today. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, the Village Clerk, and all the Village staff, we welcome you at this time. I'd like to acknowledge our board, which is here tonight, and please, when I call your name, if you would stand so that the members of this residency would be able to recognize you. Trustee Farr, please give her a hand. Trustee Satchel. Trustee Shorter. Trustee Harden. Trustee Craig. Trustee Meeks. I mention these individuals because it's very important to have a board that you can work with and that understands the future of the Village of Madison. In addition, we'll have joining us today some members from our government partnerships. Hopefully, they'll arrive sooner than later in order to be available to speak briefly. I know we have already here our state rep, none other than Debbie Myers-Martin, and she will be speaking briefly, and we'll welcome her to the podium. One of the things that I want to say, that this is an opportunity to come together to inform our residents on the progress and the challenges and the outlook for the future. I'm extremely optimistic in regards to the future of the Village of Madison. In recent years, there have been an upswing in economic growth in the Village of Madison with a growing interest for future developments. The Village of Madison has a balanced budget in the midst of everything that has gone on with COVID and all the other things that could go wrong in a small community. We've made great strides, and we are excited about our future, but there is still much work to be done. Tonight, we will discuss and highlight key points and trends for the future, and information on home rule, and some of the reasons why there is support, and some of the questions will be answered. My reason for supporting of home rule is simple. I need home rule to continue the progress and place me on the same competitive feel that most of our Western neighbors have or about to automatically achieve via high population growth. Our community must be compelling to compete with our communities to the West, and I sincerely hope you will leave here today informed on the future of the Village of Madison. And at the end of the presentation, I hope that all of your questions are answered so that you will be eager to join us in the work and the fight to move Madison to the next level. I want to thank you for being here, because I realize that with COVID and everything that has taken place, we haven't seen each other that much. But I'm happy to tell you that I am truly optimistic as to our future and where we're going and the direction we're going in. And because we have such a long agenda, I'm not going to talk any longer, because there is so much information we want to cover today. So I thank you again for being here, and Mr. Burton, we can start with our agenda. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you again for joining us today. This is a really nice crowd. I'm happy to see so many of you out here. Again, I'm Anthony Burton, the Village Administrator for the Village of Madison, and I stress that Madison, because I know people sometimes get it mistaken, so the Village of Madison. I've been a resident here now for over 25 years. Happy about everything that's happening in this village. I've seen it go from through its turmoil, change, and everything else, so I'm happy today where we're at. And I want to, just before I bring up our state rep, I want to tell you Madison is doing well. I really want to reiterate that. Madison is doing well financially. We're doing well. And we can do better. We're doing well, and we can do better. And so that's our goal. And I want to make sure I say that, because a lot of times when we, you know, stand before you, talk about what we need and help with something like home rule, the first thing comes to mind is that we're needed, because we are doing bad. That is not the truth. And you'll hear from our department heads, and they will tell you this. So to not belabor this, and I'll, next I'll, when I come back, I'll bring up our department heads, but first, I want to bring up our state rep, Debbie Myers-Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Let me echo the Village Administrator's words. Thank you so much for being here, for being engaged, for wanting to learn about home rule and what the village's intentions are, what the future of the village is. That means everything to a community when the people, when the people that live there truly care, are engaged, are dedicated, are committed to the, to the progress, the forward motion of their villages and their municipalities. So I'm very pleased to be here. I appreciate the invitation to speak. I'm not going to go into a definition of home rule, because you will learn everything that you need to know about home rule. Get rid of the misunderstandings, the misrepresentations, and all of the falsehoods that will float in communities when they begin to explore the possibilities of home rule. So that is, that is why this is such a wonderful event, for you to have that opportunity to ask questions and to learn how this will make Madison a better village, a better municipality, with enhancing the quality of life, enhancing economic development here in the Southland. And Lord knows, we need that. We need that desperately. I'm the former mayor and trustee in the Village of Olympia Fields, so I certainly understand the challenges that our Southland municipalities have on a daily basis, attracting businesses to our town, retention of businesses in our town, attracting families because of schools. These challenges are daily, and it takes serious people to address these serious issues. So in the Southland, there are over 21 municipalities that are already home rule, some of them by population and some of them by referendum. I have never heard of anyone moving from a town because they decided to go home rule. But that being said, you need to know what all of your options are, because you have the power to make those decisions. You have the power to work with your village government so that we can come to an understanding, but also a workable relationship. That's what community means all day long. Workable relationships, where you can have conversation, where you can have dialogue, where you understand what's at stake, what your commitment will be, and how this will affect the future of your town. All of us who live in the Southland, Madison, Olympia Fields, Country Club Hills, we came here for the, for the promise of suburban life. We came here for that promise. And so we must be diligent, we must be committed to making the right decisions for the right reasons. Not uninformed decisions, but the right decisions for the right reasons. And when we do that, we will see how wonderful our communities can be. And I want to commend the Village Board, the Village President, for holding this meeting, giving you the opportunity to ask questions, because that means everything, to explore, to explore and examine all of the elements that will come about if, if you decide to vote in favor of home rule. It means everything. So I commend the Board, I commend the administration, I commend the mayor for doing this, for giving you that opportunity, and I do the same thing. So as I close, because I know you have a lot of information to gain here, I do that as well. So next week, I'm actually holding a meet and greet myself, where if you have any questions about state government, about what happens in Springfield, about how that affects you back in the district, how you can keep up with what we do in Springfield, I welcome you to come out and visit me on that day, June 7th. The flyers are on the table. I thank you again for being here. I thank you for allowing me to speak. And as I said, this is a wonderful opportunity for you to gain the right information at the right time. So thank you so much.
Thank you, State Rep. Debbie Myers-Martin. We really appreciate those words. Next, we have on the agenda our Rich Township Supervisor, Mr. Calvin Jordan.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I commend the Board for, one of the things I stated early, I wanted to be a part of this process, but one of the biggest processes that I wanted to be a part is with the community, because whatever we do as elected officials, it's about you guys. It's not about me personally. There are certain things that I might like, but I'm more concerned, how do you feel with this new process? And one thing that we have to do in government, we have to see how the stakeholders, because you guys are the real stakeholders here. And I'm just happy to be a part of it. I'm happy to be a part with the township part, resident, resident of Olympia Fields, but I too, Madison is my capital, because everything I do, everything that I need, for the most part, it comes from Madison. But more importantly, I want to do things that you feel good about. And when you know what's going on, and what I like to say, and I commend this Board, is that most of the time, they do home rule, they present it, and they put it on the ballot, and they ask people to vote for it. Well, that's not the way you do it. You know, I know it's been on the, on the ballot before, but you, and you're going to hear me say this, you are the residents, you are the stakeholders, and you have to see what's going to be good for you all. I can tell you all day what I like, but I respect, and as I ask people all the time, it's like you say, hey, touch the stove, it's hot. Well, this situation here, how do you feel about it? And I think as we go along tonight, you're going to hear various speakers explain, there's going to be pluses, there's going to be minus, there's going to be pros, there's going to be cons. But I think for the most part, what you're going to get is the transparency to understand how will this benefit us? How will it affect us? And one of the key things we often say in the Southland, how does it affect our taxes? I mean, those are real concerns, but also, we have to look at it, if we are a growing community, there are things that we're going to have to do, and sometimes we have to think out of the box. But as I close, because I know there are other people here, but I just want to tell you, I appreciate you, I applaud you, and one of the things that I did tell the mayor is that I don't mind participating, but I want to make sure how you feel about it. I respect you all, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak on this. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, Supervisor Calvin Jordan. Really appreciate those words from you and Rich Township. So we have a lot of our department heads that are here, and not all of our department heads will be speaking before you today, but I wanted to make sure I still introduce the staff that's here from the Village of Madison, because I know from time to time, you all may call them, may have to reach out to them, and you don't really know who you're talking to. So I want to make sure I do mention those individuals. So our Human Resources Director, Dwayne Howard. Public Works Superintendent, Gordon Harden. Our Chief of Fire, Mike Bacon. Lori Webster, Manager of Internal Communication and Community Engagement. And then is, I don't know if Alex Brown is here from Rec Services, I know he had an engagement tonight, but okay, so Rec Services is not here, the director, she's actually out right now, but Rec Services does represent us also in the village. We have several other department heads who are going to speak before you tonight, and I'll tell you, the reason why we wanted them to come speak before you, because we want you to know what's happening in the Village of Madison. We want you to see exactly what's going on here, and we felt like these three individuals can give you a pinpoint example of what's happening in Madison. So regardless of what we do as far as home rule is concerned, they're going to tell you what's happening right now. And I think that's very important, because it's hard for us to talk about home rule or anything else if you don't know what's happening right now. So I have come before you first, our Chief of Police, Mike Jones.
Good evening, Mina President, Village Board, and all of our residents. I love that I look out here, and I know and recognize most of your faces. That makes me feel so good. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Mike Jones. I have the easiest name in the world. I've been police chief for eight years and working here for 25. So like Anthony had said, we've seen a lot of changes in the last 25 years, especially the last 10 years. I do want to say that I was feeling really good about myself until I walked in and I saw that picture of me over there. That was 52 pounds ago, so I've worked hard to, yeah. My goal is, as I'm turning 50 this year, to weigh as much as when I started, so I'm almost there. It's not often I get to read the mission statement of the Police Department, because it's, it actually hits on a lot of different aspects of what we truly are and what we care about. So you can see it up there maybe. "We, the members of the Madison Police Department, are committed to safeguarding the lives and property of the citizens in which we serve. We will continue to preserve, promote, and sustain an excellent quality of life within our village. In partnership with the community, we pledge to deliver municipal services in a professional, personal, and responsive manner. Our mandate is to do so with honor and integrity, while at all times conducting ourselves at the highest ethical standards to maintain public confidence. We are lifelong learners, and we accept our responsibilities, challenges, and necessary changes with a willing attitude as required by our profession. The men and women are the most valuable asset of the Madison Police Department, are an essential component to effectively and efficiently complete our mission." I am very, very proud to work here. I, last year, I was President of the South Suburban Association, Chief of Police, that represented over 60 communities in the Southland. So I've seen a lot of different police departments, I've seen a lot of different communities, and I come out of that presidency saying this, "I'm probably the luckiest chief out here, because I have one of the best departments with officers that truly care. I work for one of the greatest boards that sees the same vision of safety and security that I do, and our residents are incredible. They are incredible. When we felt we needed a pick-me-up, a lot of the residents were bringing over cake and cookies, and I had to say stop, because I started looking at like that guy in the picture." We are currently in the process of becoming accredited. You don't have to be accredited to be a police agency, but we wanted to do that because we wanted to show our residents that we're one of the top agencies. Currently, out of 800 agencies in Illinois, only 40 are actually accredited. It's been, we've been working on this for a year, on our policies, on our training, on our, on our procedures, and, and we just had our accreditation assessment last week. It was very stressful, but we got high marks, and we look forward to bringing that before our president and board in the near future. One of the other things we did, I want to say, is in 2018, we signed and adopted the Ten Shared Principles. The Ten Shared Principles were written by Illinois Chiefs in conjunction with NAACP, and it says basically that we don't condone misbehavior by police officers. We respect everybody based on no matter their race, religion, gender, identity, and, and those are hanging up on a, on a proclamation in the lobby of the Police Department, signed by me. So if you ever are there, it's very interesting, and that's another thing we're very, very proud of. Just so you know, our organizational chart, this Board believes in safety and security. They want us to protect our citizens, they want us to protect the businesses, because that's what brings in more citizens, and that's what brings in more businesses, and every year, they've have added more officers to the streets. Now, our community is somewhere around 19,000, 20,000, but our daytime population, based on our nine car dealerships, our eight, eight or nine elementary schools spread around across the Village of Madison, we're the elementary school feeders for all the high schools, so they all come to Madison, all of our restaurants and businesses. That means our traffic is so much greater. So we're now allotted 43 officers. We're at 40 currently, with one in the academy and two in field training, and we're getting there. We are having some retirements coming up. We just retired, last year, we retired our first female officer forever in the history of the Madison Police Department, and this year, we retired a sergeant that had 44 years here. So, yeah. I want to briefly touch on some statistics. I judge myself on, on, on safety, crime and crashes. Like I said before, our, our roads, we have roads, Volmer Road, Lincoln Highway, Sister Avenue, they have a weird dynamic, because we have businesses on them, we have residents on them, houses, and we have open roads and farmhouses, farm roads, and, and we have forest preserves. All of those coming together, and people start flying. We typically average 850 traffic crashes per, per year. That's more than two, two and a half per day. Each traffic crash takes anywhere from two to five officers, depending on the severity. That is way too much. Now, it did go down during COVID. You can see, it went down a lot. Yeah. And then what happened? It's like everyone forgot how to drive. The second list is fatalities. Is, you can barely see it, but in 2019, we had one, and 2020, we had one, and in 2021, we had four, as people are coming out of COVID. There's a lot of reasons for that. Two of those were horrible fatalities. I won't get into the detail of them, but we, two of the vehicles, the speeds were over 100 miles an hour on Lincoln Highway and on Volmer, Volmer Road. So it is a big investment in our community to try to keep safe. That's why traffic enforcement is so important. And, and the last chart shows, shows injuries. What sets us different than a lot of these other communities, we're more like Tinley and Frankfurt than we are Richton Park and Olympia Fields, is that we handle 25,000 calls of year, per, per year. It did go down again during COVID. When it went down to 21,000, unfortunately, the majority of those calls were domestic, because everyone was in the house together, getting on each other's nerves, and that's okay. Now they're starting to go up, but typically, on an average year for the last 10 years, we're at about 25,000 calls for service. Most communities that are 20,000 residents are at about 10,000 to 15,000 calls a year per service. That's what separates us from those other 20,000 resident communities. I also want to talk about auto thefts. That's a big thing now. One criminal trend that is happening nationwide, not just in the suburbs, but Chicagoland area nationwide, is criminals are using stolen cars to commit other crimes, to commit burglaries and carjackings and robberies. You can see our stolen cars here. Our chart goes from 2017, when we had 42 in a year, and then it spiked for a couple years at 75. It's starting to come down. The majority of those stolen cars are keys left in the vehicle, key fob left in the vehicle at the gas station in front of the house, warming up the car with the key in it, leaving the car unlocked. That's the majority of them. And, and through our efforts of trying to educate the residents, it has come down. But one of the things, a couple years ago, the president came to me and said, you know, I'd like you to look into these license plate reader cameras. Some of the other towns are, are starting to do it. Us, Madison, Frankfurt, Mokena, and New Lennox, all the towns with businesses down Lincoln Highway, we all got together and researched them, and we were the first agencies in the Southland to institute an LPR camera, license plate reader camera. And what does that do? All right? It gives us the ability to strategically place license plate reader cameras throughout the town so that we can capture license plates. And no, I'm not going to look it up if your husband's out till 2:00 in the morning and want to know where he is. It cannot be used for that. It has to be used for a criminal purpose. We have cleared a lot of hit-and-run crashes because of these. We've cleared crimes. But what it really does also is, it also notifies the officers when a stolen car comes into town. Our officers are able to self-dispatch, locate that stolen car, and either get it stopped, get it blocked in, or try to stop it. Nine times out of 10, you know what they do? They take off. And I tell my officers, that's okay, because you know what they're not doing? They're not committing a crime in Madison. We deter crime. I loved that our Board bought into it with, with minimal convincing from me, because they care about deterring crime, and they saw this as a useful tool. And the village paid for 15 of them throughout town. And the cool thing is, I have a detective that works with Homeland Security Investigations and DEA, and they, basically, I farm him out for the heroin pipeline through Chicago, and they make so many drug seizures and money seizures that we funded the entire program, as well as our body camera program, 100% using the drug money that's coming out of Mexico at no cost to the village residents. One of the things we also, you'll see rolling around town, is our speed radar signs. We just got those. We got, I've been working on trying to get those for years. I only have two of them currently, but we're going to work and look at, see grants for, for next year, but we have two of them, we got on a grant, and, and they're very, very effective in slowing cars down. So we're happy about that. One thing I'm very, very proud of, and I'm not going to go through this list, is I want to, a few years ago, I, I shared this list with the Village President, and she said, "Man, looks like you're running more programs out of the Police Department than you do the Community Center." I thought that's a shot, but we are proud of our, and that's why I look around and I see residents here that have gone through the Citizens Police Academy. I see residents from our Triad, I mean, our, our award-winning senior Triad group, that typically has anywhere from 30 to 60 people, and if anyone from Triad, stand up, so I can recognize you. They love us, and we love them. And then we do things that, that residents might not know. Some of our businesses support us and give us gift cards. Last year, we got 50 gift cards from Burlington at $50 apiece. We took 10 of them. There's a domestic violence shelter in town. We took 10 of them and gave them to the, the mothers right before Christmas at our domestic violence shelter. And, and then our officers actually stop cars for vehicle violations. Maybe a headlight is out, maybe the windshield is Maybe a headlight is out, maybe the windshield is cracked. And we understand that maybe you can't afford it and we're not giving you a ticket. And you can see the frustration on your faces. So you know, you're having a hard time, why don't we give you this $50 gift card? And, and they actually give our officers hugs and tears and we love that stuff. As you know, we're big into Special Olympics. Our officers, again, there's 800 departments in the state of Illinois, yet we're in the top 25 of, of how much we raise every year. Our little town with 40 officers raises, raised 17,500 last year during COVID. So I'll throw this out there. I'll throw this out there. Uh, next March, if anyone wants to join us in the polar plunge, come on, I'd love to see you. And we're actually, uh, planning a skydive trip this summer. So I'll, I'll, I'll wait outside for you guys to sign up. I, I have gotten a lot of questions, you know, how does a police department say, stand on, on a home rule? And I can't say, you know, politically, but I can tell you the benefits of it. Uh, one of the things that I would look forward to is crime-free housing. We all know the frustrations of, of living near, near a place that it's constantly having parties or constantly, or you think they're selling drugs out of the window or, or, or they're at a rental house and it's, it's a revolving door. Crime-free housing gives us the teeth to work with the landlord association to work toward getting them out. Whereas our eviction process could take months or years, as a lot of us know. This gives us a little bit more teeth and accountability, which I, I think every resident that lives nearby a problem house would be like, yeah, let's do that. And it would allow for more funding for resources. It's been, as we know, we're coming out of recession and it's been very, very frustrating to get the tools that we need to do our job. And we had to be creative and we've done a good job. We, we've recently worked on, on a new fleet, which was in dire need. But this will enable us to do more community programs and, and just give us a better opportunity to serve the community. And that's really what we want. So, uh, again, I'm going to let the, the rest of the directors talk. I really thank you for listening to me and, and, uh, it's, it's good to see everybody.
Thank you, Chief Jones. A great presentation. Is Tom Joseph from the Realty Association here by any chance? No? Okay. So I just want to just, you know, Mike talked about crime-free housing. I just want to make sure I reiterate this, that we have the ability with Home Rule to talk about crime-free housing and deal with issues that we have with everything from squatters, et cetera, with crime-free housing. Now, I will say this though. We did agree and president, myself, we met with the Realty Association to talk about the fact that we want to work with them on creating this crime-free housing. So it's not just Madison going after crime-free housing. We're going to work with the Realty Association to make sure that it's, it's adequate for everyone and, and, and making sure that homes are not being taken advantage of. So we're going to work with the Realty Association. We didn't get 100% of support from the Realty Association, but they did not go against us neither. I think that's important I say that because we met with them. We didn't sit back and say, oh, we're just going to do this and do Home Rule. We went and met with the Realty Association to make sure we got their backing or at least got their support not to go against us. And so I think that's important. I, I mentioned that to you all because I know Realty Association typically, here it is, is June 2nd, and we haven't gotten bombarded by the Realty Association to this date because we went and met with them. I think that's important, just like we're meeting with you. So I just want to make sure I, I talk about that. Next, we have up, um, coming before you, Mr. Ernest Roberts, Community Development.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Burton. Madam President, Board of Trustees, elected officials, staff, department heads, and residents. It's great to see each and every one of you out here today. And, uh, my name is Ernest Roberts III. And, uh, I am the Director of Community Development. And, um, community development is a very interesting department within the village of Madison. I'm sure you all have had some sort of contact with us in one way or the other, hopefully mostly good. Uh, we're the kind of the enforcement arm of the village, if you will. Uh, but our main task is to make sure that, uh, things get done as far as process, policies, procedures, uh, as well as making the village, uh, look great. And that's been our focus. Here I have a organizational chart. It kind of shows just a brief, uh, breakdown of some of the departments that we have within our department. Uh, I have with, with us tonight, Zatania McCoy is our Deputy Director, our Chief Code Enforcement Officer. We also have our Senior Building Code Inspector, Building Engineering Consultants. And thanks to the Board of Trustees, we were able to extend, extend our staff to three, now three full-time code enforcement officers. So that's very critical. Uh, I don't know if you all know, but this village is 10.2 square miles and we have over 75 lane miles of roadway. We're actually bigger than towns like Calumet City and some of the other towns that are around this area. So there's a lot of territory to cover. There's a lot of vacant land that we're trying to develop. So it's very important that we have as much coverage as possible. So I just wanted to point that out. So community development, uh, has several different breakdowns. As you can see, uh, we cover a wide range of items. Building permits, structural plan reviews, uh, code enforcement, property maintenance has been a big issue the last couple of weeks. I will tell you that we have really focused on making sure that property maintenance, both commercial and residential, uh, properties are done properly. Uh, grass cutting, uh, property maintenance and the like. It's very important, uh, because it goes to property values and the look of the village as well. Uh, zoning administration and enforcement, uh, any type of zoning issues that go through the Plan Commission comes through our department as well. And, um, the big one is current and long-range infrastructure planning. Well, I want to back up and say that, uh, first of all, I've been a resident for 18 years in this village. I love this village. I have a background of, uh, engineering, uh, civil engineering by, civil engineer by background, as well as a project management professional. And I will say that, you know, in all the times I've been in this village, this is the best staff, the best board, and the best administration that I've seen. And I could just honestly say that they've given us free rein to do what we need to do, to have better ideas and to move this village forward. So I'm very appreciative of that. Again, we have engineering plan reviews and inspections, engineer-related permits, and the developer application process. I just want to talk about that for a moment. We have a lot of development going on in the village. And we want to make sure that from the beginning, when a concept plan goes through economic development, when it goes to Plan Commission, uh, and workshops. And we want to make sure all the way through the Certificate of Occupancy, that all of our procedures are, are followed. All of our permitting is followed, our engineering is followed. We want a good product. We want to make sure that things are done right, that we're not going to be taken advantage of. So one of the things in my department, we make sure that we focus on that intensely. As you notice, around, we've had a lot of development in the last couple of years, which we all need to be proud of. So we want to make sure with all this flurry of activity that we hold people's feet to the fire. And that's what some of the things that we, that we are involved in. Comprehensive plan? Well, I'm going to tell a little story. So when I first came onboard the village, the president and the administrator basically gave me a task. They said, you got to get this done. Uh, we hadn't had a comprehensive plan that was codified since 1987, if you could believe that. Uh, we had another one that we were doing, I think around 2012, 2013. It never got approved. And I will tell you, my first thought was how are we going to do this in the middle of a pandemic? We like to have, uh, open house meetings. We like to have feedback from our stakeholders. And so with our, uh, planning consultant and with our staff, I want to say we did a very good job, even virtually, to get the residents involved, the stakeholders involved. And if you have a chance to go on the website, it is a wonderful document that covers a wide range of, of, of ideas as far as where we're going. Because you have to write the vision and make it plain. And you'd have to know where you're going. And that's very, very important. And a lot of communities kind of react. And what we didn't want to do is we, we didn't want to be in that position. We wanted to have a plan where we can say, these are the things that we're looking at. From transportation to our demographics, to old historical Madison, to developments, to everything that we have going on, how do we plan the future? And what if, what is our strategic plan as well? So I just want to say that we got it done in eight months and it was codified in March of 2021. So I just want to thank the board and everyone else for getting that done. And again, some of the other items, I won't go through them. But to, to guide the framework, uh, so we want to see what, what are projects that we have as far as, uh, infrastructure projects? And I'll get to that in a minute. And, uh, roadway, streets, uh, all of these things, transportation, uh, demographics, where we're going. And it's key that we have a plan. And so again, if you go through those things, we have already, are already in the process of implementing those plans as we speak. There are a lot of projects that we've called out in the comprehensive plan that is, that is either ongoing or that will be ongoing within the next year or two, and we'll share those with you momentarily. And again, we want to make sure that your investment as property owners is, is maintained. We want to make sure that we're holding to the integrity of the zoning laws and all of the integrity as far as the different neighborhoods, making sure that things are uniform and making sure also that property values continue to increase. So in the last couple of years, be surprised that these are all the items, and these are just a few that we have going on right now. I just want to point out again, from 2020 to 2021, we've completed over 2,500 permits for residential and commercial properties in the village. And again, this was all during a pandemic and reduced staff. So I, I just want to thank my staff for, uh, hanging in there, uh, processing these and getting these out. And, uh, it was just a wonderful thing. Also, uh, recently, we did the Invest in Cook Grant, application for preservation bike path reconstruction from US Route 30 to Old Plank Trail. That's a major route. We know we have a lot of bicyclists in the area. I'm one of them. And, uh, it's very frustrating when you don't have a smooth bike path or we have to go around or it's flooded out or the like. And, uh, we gave a very good presentation, a very good application this year, and I'm very confident that we will get funded. It's 2,700 lineal feet from US Route 30 to Old Plank Trail. It's that section, uh, that's there, uh, that's adjacent to Costner Avenue. And, uh, we're looking to also, uh, repair the areas north all the way to Volmer as well under a separate, separate application. So we are definitely focused on non-motorized vehicles, biking, and getting out and having families come together. And, uh, especially now with the weather being the way it is, we definitely want to make sure that we have those bike, bike trails in, in good repair. We have some of the other projects that I want to point out. Uh, we have 207th Street, which is a, uh, a major collector within the roadway, uh, system from Pulaski to Cicero Avenue. And, uh, we got a strategic transportation program, resurfacing and covert replacement over Butterfield Creek. Now, this program is very interesting because, uh, we have 80/20 reimbursement, which means that whatever the village funds and, uh, for the costs of the engineering as well as the construction, we receive back 80% back to us. And so that's why these, these programs are very important. And we want to thank our state representatives and, uh, Congress, Congress folks for, uh, pushing those. Those are very critical, uh, for us as well. And the big one is US Route 30, uh, Lincoln Highway and Illinois Route 50, Cicer Avenue intersection improvements. I can tell you Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, doesn't matter, that whole corridor is flooded with traffic. And so one of the key critical things that we have is to make sure that we, uh, have that as the main focal point coming into the village. It was part of the, uh, streetscape plan as well as our comprehensive plan. It's been funded, uh, via IDOT and, um, we have, uh, I have some renderings, uh, in a few slides later. But I just wanted to point out that that is a very key and critical intersection. Uh, we're looking to widen, uh, dual left turn lanes on all four leg, uh, all four lanes, uh, right turn lanes, as well as landscaping and the like. We're going to also have stamped crosswalks, medians. And I think the only other location is Orland Park as far as the decorative street lights and traffic signals. We wanted to really spruce this area up coming into our key gateway, coming into the village of Madison. So it's going to be messy for the next year or so, but I think the finished product, I think you'll be very proud of. Um, as Chief Jones mentioned earlier, we have a lot of speed areas. Uh, Volmer Road and Ridgeland Avenue is one of the key ones. And, uh, we have a grant through the county to, uh, have also an infrastructure improvement, uh, for the intersection improvement there, spring and summer of 2024. We have a lot of development along Central Avenue. Uh, we're widening from US Route 30 all the way to Salk Trail. It was part of a, uh, Invest in Cook Grant we got in 2019. And we have several developments in the area, a lot of truck traffic, and we're looking forward to working with the county, uh, to get that done. And then finally, I got a lot of complaints for the median removal and replacement along US Route 30 going west to Harlem. So I want to talk about that a little bit. When I first joined, uh, the village, what was happening in the past is we had a lot of projects that were state, county, and they wouldn't coordinate with us. Or it would fall, the coordination would fall through, uh, and we wouldn't be able to get our comments, uh, until the end. So what we decided to do was to make sure that any type of state or federal project comes through our department, we're going to have comments, we're going to get feedback, and we're going to also make sure that things get done properly. And in this particular case, it was a resurfacing project, but they left the medians. And my, my thought was, what's going on with that? Why, why is that? They said, well, according to our design manuals, we only do resurfacing. So I said, well, that's not going to work. I said, because when you go west to Harlem, everything is reconstructed. And I said, it is definitely a disparity. And so talking to IDOT, we are now looking into funding a separate project to get those medians done within the next year or so. So we definitely, uh, want to make sure we did that. So again, my background, being in state, uh, being both on the federal, on the federal side, the local side, uh, just want to make sure that the interest of the village is being covered. That's my main point. And the good news is about that all of these things are happening within the last two years. And it was a direct result of the comprehensive plan as well as the other plans that we have in place. So we're not just going through the exercise and going through the motions of it, we're actually implementing these things. So again, I want to thank the staff, uh, again, for putting together the comprehensive plan, putting together the streetscape plan. Again, in the middle of a pandemic, we got a very good turnout from our stakeholders as well as, uh, the Planning Commission, the Board of Trustees. And so again, it was a lot of hard work that's gone into it, but I'm very happy in our direction in where we're going. These are some of the maps, uh, out of our, uh, comprehensive plan. One of them is the bicycle and pedestrian network plan that I discussed earlier. Some of the gaps that we have, we're going to try and fill those up. We actually have budgets and schedules now for those. And again, it goes into, uh, the possibility of, of Home Rule would give us way more flexibility to be able to fund these items. And again, I talked about the US Route 30 and Illinois 50, uh, project at Cicero Avenue and, uh, Lincoln Highway. And you could kind of see the bottom portion is the rendering. We're also going to plan on having stamped crosswalks, the medians, and the landscaping too. I think that area is going to be very, very nice once it's completed. Now here comes the big kahuna. So I've lived in the village, again, like I said, over 18 years. And the biggest thing that I've heard is when is our streets going to get fixed? Right? So I just want to, I just want to give a little background again. So again, I was tasked when I, when we first came to the village, I suggested to the president and to the administration, I said, we got to get a payment management plan. And they was like, well, what, what does that all entail? Because we kind of, you know, some communities kind of just hop in the car, kind of take a look at the streets, kind of do a cursory review. I said, no, this needs to be detailed. It needs to be empirical and we need to have, uh, facts, data, and we have to have cost per lane mile. And I said, all this needs to be transparent so that the residents could see exactly what each stretch of roadway costs. And so when funding opportunities come up, we can plug into it and have a plan. And again, I want to thank the Board of Trustees, the president, uh, the administration and our staff. Uh, we really hit the ground running and we put together a payment management plan, uh, that has what's called a payment condition index. So we rated every single street, every village-owned street in, in the village, and we rated it from best to worst. And that's all on the website, it's very transparent, and you could see exactly what kind of shape your street is in. And I think we've never, I don't believe that a lot of communities have, have not done that. The best thing about it is we were able to use motor fuel tax to fund it. So it didn't even come out of the village coffers to do that. So we put that together in probably four or five months, got it approved. And now we have an adopted plan, uh, that deals with how we're going to move forward as a community to deal with some of the worst streets. This is, uh, also part of the plan. Uh, you can see what I talked about, uh, the different shaded areas, uh, throughout the village. And we try to update this after every construction season. So the streets that have been updated, they will turn green, a light green. So the streets that have been updated, they will turn green, a light green. The ones that are very poor or in serious condition are in the red, and those will be scheduled high priority. So each year we'd have a slew of streets that would be done. Now here's the issue, again, everything is about funding. Primarily, we've used MFT funds or grant funds to improve our streets. Now, we've got lucky the last couple of years, we were around, probably around a million dollars just because we had other supplementary funds. But that's not consistent every year, and motor fuel tax alone is not going to address the issues that we have. So again, I can't stress enough that home rule would definitely put a big dent in addressing getting these streets completed. I mean, just point blank. Again, we just don't want to have a plan. We want to have a plan and we want to be able to implement that plan accordingly. And as you can see here, actually, the streets in the village, they're probably in a high poor area, which is not the, not the worst thing because what what it's showing is this, some of the streets in the poor, poor zone is beginning to deteriorate. And you have alligator cracks, you have some subsurface crack, and you got water that's being held, it's not being able to drain. And so as time goes on, if we don't address it, that that PCI index is going to slide down the curve, it's going to get worse. Again, with home rule and having additional monies to reallocate, we would definitely be able to take, say, a dozen locations each year, and we would be able to knock those locations out. Ultimately, what we want to do is put everything on a general maintenance plan. We want all the streets done, and we would just want to be able to surface coat, surface coat the streets and be in a situation where we don't have to deal with spending a whole lot of money with major repairs. That is very key and critical. And again, this location, this this map is in the payment management plan and it's on the website. Anybody can go take a look at it. Again, it's all about transparency. So I'm very proud of having a system that's in place that we were able to have that you can actually look at and say, this is the condition of my street. And we, you know that it's going to be scheduled for repair, especially if it's in, it's in a bad situation. So we we have heard the cries of the residents, because I'm one of them. And so we want to make sure that we address it because that's one of the biggest, that was one of the biggest issues so far. One of the things I want to also add before I move on is the fact that once we, again, once we get everything taken care of, we will be in a better situation. And hopefully, we'll be able to address these issues. Again, my background is as a municipal engineer, I know that these plans work. This whole data was based on the American Society of Testing and Materials, which is a nationwide testing procedure. It was something that was detailed. They use laser technology to go all the way down into the streets of every single segment in this village, and we were able to rate it. So this is definitely based on empirical data and not subjection. So I just wanted to point that out. A couple more slides, we have complete streets policy. Again, we put that together to accommodate non-motorized vehicles. So when developers come in, they can accommodate pedestrian vehicles as well as sidewalk bicycles and pedestrian and situations and the like. And it's key, we also have a breakdown of jurisdiction. So when you complain about Voma Road or Governor's Highway or Lincoln Highway, know that that's not directly the village, those are other regulatory agencies. But what I will tell you is that we will do our level best to communicate with those agencies if there's issues with grass cutting, with maintenance and the like. And again, one of the things with my background is I I told the administration, anything that comes through a project that comes through our, our development and anything that comes through our department, I want to have my hands on it. And the reason why is because I know specifically what needs to get done, what questions to ask, and to make sure that our interests are taken care of. That's very, very important because I noticed in the past that things would happen and we would get left out because of lack of communication. So we want to shut that down going forward. So I just wanted to point that out. Sidewalk network plans, as we develop, we want to make sure that we close the sidewalk gaps. If you notice in the last two years, we've done a lot of sidewalk gaps. Public Works has been instrumental in that, and we got a bunch of addresses, tripping hazards, and especially just sidewalks that are missing. Unfortunately, after the 2008, nine crash, a lot of developments were left in disrepair. That's coming back now. Developers are interested in this village and they're coming back in in a force. So we want to make sure that the sidewalk and pedestrian areas are covered too as well. So finally, as it relates to home rule, it's very critical for our department. Again, we cover code and life safety issues. One of the biggest things is requiring annual and residential rental inspections, what we call ESIs, existing structural inspections, not just in change of occupancy, but every year. And why is that important? It's important for my life safety situation. We don't want people in properties that are in disrepair, and we don't find out about it until it's up for sale or the property changed hands. That's too late. We want to be involved each and every year, looking at residential and multi-unit buildings and making sure that those properties are safe and that they apply to our code. Also, annual inspections will help us keep our systems updated with ownership information. Another key is landlord registration. That's key because when you have rentals, you want to know who's in the property. And you want to be able to track to see if there's any issues, we want to know who the owner is. And so we've gotten away from that. So with home rule, we'll be able to have more teeth with that, as well as limiting the amount of rentals in the village. As you know, if you look at the comprehensive plan, the more rental properties you have in a, in a town or community, it becomes a little bit more problematic. So we'll have a little bit more control under home rule to be able to limit that and have a little bit more say. And finally, again, I want to talk about the the roads. I can't stress that enough. With home rule, being able to reallocate funds and being able to do these things will make our village better. And hopefully, it'll move us forward, and a lot of the issues that are here now will not be going forward. So I want to thank you for your time and good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernest, for that information. It's a lot of information. Let me just say that you all may have questions as we're speaking. We do have postcards that some people will be passing out. If you want to write a question down, please write it down now because at the end of this presentation, we want to hear from you. We want to know what questions you may have. We want you to put them all on paper. We don't, we don't, won't have a free mic. But we will have the ability for you to ask questions on, on the index card. So they're passing out, raise your hand, they'll bring them to you to ensure that your questions get answered today or in the future. We definitely want to make sure we try to give them today. If we run out of time, we'll give them definitely answer in the future. So next up, we have for economic development, Ms. Laverne Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Again, my name is Laverne Murphy. I head up Economic Development and Marketing for our community. First off, I want to say that I'm honored to be here today to serve under a great board under the leadership of our village president, Sheila Chalmers-Kern, our Board of Trustees, our village administrator, working with great department heads and staff to get things done on a daily basis. So I would like to say that I'm honored to be here and also serve you as our residents as well. I've been with the village for 21 years, recently became certified economic developer through the International Economic Development Council. So I have been growing in my profession, my expertise, in order to continue to move this village forward. So as you can see, I, as I stated, I'm also a resident, in case I did not state that. And I do support home rule. I support home rule. Yes, there may be bias, but I see the benefits of home rule. And hopefully, you will see that and I'm able to convey that through my presentation, that you will see what the benefits are. But also too, as a resident, for home rule, I see it as a way of us removing the one glove fits all. We're able to customize programs and policies to continue to make our community grow based on the things that we need within our community versus a one glove fits all. As you can see from previous departments, I have one of the smallest departments, but we make a great big impact within the village of Madison, especially with all the help that goes throughout each department to ensure that we're able to bring substantial development here to the village of Madison. So also, my staff that I have here today, she's passing out cars, Jeanette Ramos. She has up the marketing specialist. And then we also have a planner, which is Rama Ramen. She's not here today, and she handles the planning for our department. So what is the role of economic development? Most people may think, okay, bringing businesses here to the village of Madison. And you're absolutely right, it is the core of economic development. But it does span beyond business attraction. There are other programs and policies as well as procedures that help economic development and the community grow. So economic development can be defined as programs, groups of policies, activities that seek to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for the community by creating and/or retaining jobs that facilitate growth and provide a stable tax base. And as you can see, the ecosystem that is generated through economic development. When you look at the job creation, you look at the increase in the tax base, all filters into bringing a greater quality of life for the village of Madison. So how are we doing that? What are the functions within economic development? We wear many hats. We are an analyst. We have to know what the strengths and the weaknesses are to make sure that we remain a competitive community. The catalyst, as far as incentives are concerned, when we're talking to different developers as a way of attracting business here to the community. We're also gap fillers. We're out there, we're negotiating great agreements to make sure that they're performing, making sure they're having thresholds, and making sure that there's clawbacks in case they don't deliver. We're also a marketer. We're making sure we're communicating with our residents as well. And then we're also an educator, as we're doing here today and and then as you're always seeing on our Facebook, our website, making sure that our residents are staying informed with information that's happening within the village of Madison. And then what's most important is that we're visionary. Our department is a visionary to make sure that we're able to align with the powers that be to ensure that the village's resources are focused on the catalytic projects that can positively change the community for the economic future. So, you know, here are some of the things that make our particular community great. We are a middle-class community, and I'm not sure how many of you know exactly what our demographics look like. And I think it's important for you to know how we are classified as a middle-class community. When you look at our median average household income, it's $97,000 a year. Okay, and then you're looking at the home value, $208,000 as far as the median home value. And then our population went up slightly from the last census that we conducted. And then we're always proud that we boast that we are 80% homeowner occupied in the village. So when I talk about how things span beyond business attraction with economic development, one of those is through our streetscape plan, and wayfinding was one of them. We actually engage residents, hopefully, most of you were engaged through this process because this is your community and we want to make sure you're involved. And as Ernest said, we're not doing anything by the seat of our pants, but we're making sure that we have plans in place, they're implementable plans that we can bring forward in order to move the community forward. So with the wayfinding signage that you see here up on the screen, these are some of the selected signages that will be done throughout our community. There are over 100 wayfinding signage, signage, signages that will be placed throughout the community. And as you can see, we have the historic Madison, we'll have an arch as you lead into the community, making sure we can identify preservation paths, other wayfinding signage when individuals are coming to our community. Where are civic buildings located? Where's the fire department, things of that nature? Where's historic Madison? You'll be surprised how many residents are unfamiliar with that. We do have a historic downtown Madison. And so also too, as you drive on I-57, the famous bridge that everyone sees when you're passing south on I-57, making sure that it has an announcement that you're entering into the village of Madison. And so with these type of signages, they come with a cost, and they're very pricey. And so we need ways, different ways in which we can incorporate this and make sure that we're able to implement and have the funding in order to beautify our community. And so again, when we talk about economic development outside of business attraction, one of the things that's most important is our existing business. They are creating wealth for us now. They're reinvesting in our community. We have our auto dealers who are reinvesting and staying here in the community where able to sustain them. We have the Mannheim Business Park that's also expanding. Sam's Club has expanded. And also a slew of other retailers that have reinvested, remodeled here in the village of Madison. And those are the ones that are creating wealth, and we want to make sure that we can sustain them and make sure that they remain here. I want to thank our economic development commissioners as well. They're very vital with our program, which is our business retention and expansion programs. They're out there visiting our businesses, asking questions, making sure there's any red flags that we need to identify, give them resources to make sure that they have information and also that there's a two-way communication in case there's any questions that they may have in reference to the village of Madison. Also, we're making sure that we're supporting our small business as well. We're doing Small Business Saturday. Hopefully, you are supporting Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, which is in November. We hosted a job fair with over 200 applicants came out looking for jobs. We had 21 businesses that participated, and it was very well received. We're making sure that we're communicating with our business by offering a business breakfast, letting them know things that are happening within the community because they're our frontline workers, they're our ambassadors. When people are coming in and they're visiting our community, we want them to know what's going on in the community. Also, we are making sure that we are giving them information, resources through the state and the county level. We're constantly getting information about grants, small business programs through our state legislators and our Cook County, and we're making sure that we're sending this information to our businesses as well. We also conducted a business industrial tour with the state of Illinois, the Department of Economic Development and Commerce. We came out, they came out, and we visited several of our industrial businesses as well as our manufacturers as well. And we're strengthening those relationships. Relationships are key. They want to make sure that they can do business with people that they trust. And when they trust, they stay. And when they stay, they expand and they reinvest here in the community. And we're also making sure we're doing business in the spotlight as well. Again, giving our small businesses and other businesses a platform to make sure that you know what's in our community. And then also business incentives as well in order to support our businesses. So as we all know, there has been tremendous growth within the village of Madison over the last several years under the leadership of the administration, our elected officials that are here. And you should be proud that you are, you have such a great administration that's leading the community in the right direction. So one of our big wins that we all know and we all see from afar is Amazon, which is the 4 million square foot facility. We're still boasting about that when we sit down with individuals and talk to them about the number of jobs that are here within the village of Madison. Having Amazon as one of our anchors within our community is a great thing. And so I want to bring up this map. This map kind of gives you a comprehensive list of all the activity that has been going on for several years in the village of Madison. And I just want you to take some time and kind of absorb all the new activity that has been occurring within the village of Madison. And a lot of times it's hard to see it when you're seeing things happening one at a time. But when you put them on the list and you see the comprehensive list, you're amazed at the type of development that we were able to do over the last couple of years. As I mentioned, from your Amazon to the West, to the Mannheim, Greater Chicago Auto Auction has been expanding. RL, RL Trucking is also coming here to the village of Madison. They're under the development. Also, we will have a Humane Society that you will see as well. The senior living facility that has gone up, that's on the west side of town. It is like a luxury resort for your senior living. And so if you have not been able to take a tour, it is just one where they have all the bells and whistles from a theater, workout, ice cream parlor, salon, you name it, they have it to make sure that our seniors are living comfortable. And then we also talk about one of the things that we landed recently that was And then we also talk about one of the things that we landed recently that was huge. And again, this is about our board, our village president being very proactive, keeping their ear to the ground with things that are going on. We know that cannabis, recreational cannabis is one of the things that's growing faster than anything now that it is legalized. And so by us making sure that we had an ordinance in place, zoning in place, to make sure when that particular legislation came down, we were ready. And with that, we were able to land one of the largest cannabis manufacturing facilities in the state of Illinois. This this was through an RFP where we competed against a couple of outside, out-of-state municipalities that we had to compete with, and we competed with one in the north suburbs. But with this, there are very huge restrictions that you have to meet and Madison was able to land that facility. Also too, more construction that has been going on on Central Avenue. As I mentioned, the Humane Society, Central Truck Properties that you've seen, the cannabis all on Central Avenue, as well as the Sherwin Paint Facility. I'm not sure if you all know that that's like another one of our hidden gems that's off Central that's there. We also have the Sam's Club, as I mentioned, is expanding. And what we're also proud about is that, as you know, we do have the Prairie State Satellite College that's here. So we're proud to announce that that particular facility will be converted into a Fire and Science Academy where our fire department can train individuals right here within the village of Madison. And so other projects that you see here, of course, is the Peace Fresh Market, 80,000 square feet. We're happy that 159 was able to build their STEM Center as well as their school district with the help of Amazon. Again, more collaborations that has been happening here in the village of Madison. So the Humane Society will be opening this month. Actually, they'll have their grand opening within a couple of weeks. If you're looking for a friendly pet, you know, it's the time to actually rescue one because they will have the cats and dogs there for anyone that needs a loving home. And then also, of course, most of you have been noticing what's been going on with the former Toys R Us, you know? We see the construction going on. So we do want you to know that it will be a relocation of the Discount Rugs and Furniture Store. You know, you know, we don't want to get jaded by the name because this is such a successful story with the relocation of this particular furniture store. They are expanding from 5,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet in the village of Madison so that they're able to bring more inventory. For most of you that may not know is that they carry Ashley Signature Furniture Line. And so a lot of times too, when you're going out and you're shopping at others' name brand furniture stores, because he is so involved with the community, he will take what you saw in other stores and say, let me see how comparable or how I can match them or yet find you the same exact furniture within his store. So we ask that you continue to support this store. They are great community partners. When we talk about partnering with individuals, they just didn't relocate. They came, they met with the president and staff and wanted to know, what is your vision? What do you see? How would you like for us to partner with you and be aligned to make sure we bring you a great product? And that's exactly what they did with the redevelopment that's reoccurring here with the furniture store. And so of course, most of you are still probably wondering what's going on with the former Lincoln Mall. It's been some time and, you know, we're developers. We've decided to take the developer hat with this. And when you take the developer hat, you see all the nuts and bolts, the knit, the gritty of trying to prepare a shovel-ready site. And when you're trying to prepare a shovel-ready site, there are so many things that goes on behind the scenes that you just don't know. And you're amazed at what they have to do in reference to identifying utilities, making sure that they're, you know, doing the schematics correctly. And so this is just one of the plans that we went out to the International Council of Shopping Centers just this past week and we were talking to developers about it. The response that we have received, because we've been going out pitching for so many years and yet we're at a spot and at a place now where we can start to make things happen, where shovels can go in the ground and we can start making development happen for this particular area. So when we talk about other businesses, we are diversifying our business, our, you know, business establishments here in the village of Madison. So we're just not focused on retail. And even though retail is great, we always want retail, we embrace retail, but we know retail is changing. So we want to diversify our mix of businesses. So anytime one of the categories get weak, we can still continue to function as a municipality and move forward. So we've been adding manufacturing, e-commerce, as you see. Workforce development is also critical in the village because we want to make sure that we're training individuals, making sure that they are job-ready by working with various organizations. And that's critical to make sure that we have individuals that can hold jobs and get sustainable jobs here in the village of Madison. Some of the other businesses I want to mention where not only do we have, you know, your startup businesses from your co-ops that are making minimum wage to your higher-end, middle, upper income salaries here in the village of Madison. So from education, we have Can Academy Nursing School that's here in the village of Madison. I mentioned the Fire and Science Academy at Prairie State College. We have the extension of the U of I Illinois Agricultural Center here in the village of Madison. We have Cook County Health Department that's within our twin buildings at the corner of Lincoln Highway and Cicero. We have the Federal Department of Commerce, of Transportation, I'm sorry, that's also there as well. Congresswoman Kelly has an office here, State Representative Debbie Myers-Martin, she has an office here. And then we also have training to make sure that there's technical assistance, as I said, when we talk about workforce training. And that is with 4343 Ascending House. They've been able to put something together where you have a shared kitchen, where you will have 3D printing, where you will have a podcast and also technical assistance to make sure that our small businesses can flourish into larger businesses. So when we talk about incentives, you hear that a lot. And why do we have to give incentives to business? Right? It's very critical that we give incentives to business. A lot of times we need to bridge that financial gap, make a public-private partnership with our developers and our interested parties. Individuals need financial assistance and sometimes that financial assistance can also mean opportunity gaps as well. We have to consider that because sometimes is the opportunity may of operating a business may be cheaper at another town where the taxes are lower. So sometimes we have to gauge with our incentives and why it's so important that we incentivize some of our larger projects. And so some of our incentives that we have, and you can clearly see how it's illustrated on this map, and it's identified by very, various highlights from our TIF districts to our business districts. We also have facade programs to help our businesses, enterprise zones, as well as the Class A Cook County Property Tax Incentives. So I have circled two areas on this particular map. And the first area that you see to the right of the screen is within our historic Madison area. That is just one of the areas that do not have any incentives, any boundaries or anything that can help with any revitalization for that particular side of town. And so as I talk about how Home Rule can be beneficial, which I'll get into later, of how we have boundaries and with these boundaries, there are restrictions where we can't go outside these boundaries. These particular incentives are generating revenue, funding that can help with the development within the community. But if it's happening outside those boundaries, our hands are tied. And so by us being able to eliminate business districts, then we're able to fund more projects in, say, our historic Madison. Areas where we need to put our street skate plan, where there are no boundaries, this will actually help facilitate with our wayfinding signage. Because when it's outside the boundary, we're restricted with funding that particular wayfinding signage. And with the elimination of that, we will be able to expedite some of those efforts. And our finance person will actually talk about a little bit of that later. So for economic development, how is Home Rule beneficial for economic development? Some of the things I've talked about, when we talk about the business climate, it gives us greater ability for regulations to help businesses during special circumstances or emergency recovery. I'll give you a perfect example because during the pandemic, we were mandated by the state of how we had to operate with businesses, where certain businesses just couldn't open. To have businesses call you crying because it's their livelihood, that they can't open a business or they can't do curbside offerings for their business operation, it's hurtful because we are mandated by the state to operate based on the executive order. But being a home rule, we're able to customize programs and procedures that can help our businesses when we're in a state of crisis to make sure that our businesses can remain safe, that's number one, but then also work with them to make sure that their business can remain in operation. And also too, when we look at expanding economic opportunity, which is another benefit for Home Rule. So again, I talked about business district having restrictive boundaries. When we remove the business district, it gives us more opportunities, more funding in our general fund. And so when we talk about historic Madison not being covered by an incentive, that will allow us opportunities to work with different businesses down there to help revitalize that area, which is very critical. And then lastly, when we talk about redevelopment efforts and how Home Rule helps economic development, Home Rule will afford Madison the ability to be more expeditious in our regulations for procedures in obtaining commercial property, be it through sales, acquisition or abandonment. So let me give you an example. So we do have one of our shopping centers at the corner of Lincoln Highway and Cicero. We have the furniture store going on the Incap, but then there's a separate owner for the shopping center. So this shopping center owner, you know, they're not reinvesting in the community. We've sat down with them, we've talked to them and we're just a bucket, a drop in the bucket as far as their portfolio of properties that they have throughout the United States. Well, being Home Rule will allow us to put different programs and procedures in place. For example, let's just use if someone decides not to keep up their property, we were able to drive down the fifth or put a program in place where after so long, if there's vacancy, then we're able to take that property over. Just to give you an example of how we're able to customize programs and procedures to help keep our community safe, as you've mentioned, but also continue with economic development efforts and the revitalization of our commercial area. So I want to thank you all for your time and that concludes my presentation for economic development.
Thank you, Laverne, for all that information. The last presenter we have from staff, as I mentioned, I wasn't going to bring all the staff up, but the last presenter is our finance department. And I want to say this before he comes up, is that this is probably the part that everyone wants to pay as close attention to as you can. Because at the end of the day, this is how we move forward. Again, then day finances is how we move forward, is how we get things done. So I really want you to pay very close attention to what he says because this is what's going to get us to the next level. It's also going to give you the best information you need to know when it comes to Home Rule. So Rashid Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I promise I won't be before you long. The NBA Finals game is on and I do want to, as much as I like being here. But like Anthony said, finance is very important. I'm sure this is a hot topic with all of our residents here. So I just want to start, my name is Rashid Jones. I am the Finance Director for the Village of Madison. I'm a licensed certified public accountant and I have over 14 years of municipal experience, finance experience. I do have the pleasure of working with a great staff. They're listed here. One of our staff members is here today. Her name is Tana Webster and she's the Financial Services Manager. So thank you, Tana. I just want to go over our goals really quickly. The goal of the Finance Department is to provide a responsible fiscal leadership through accurate, balanced and transparent financial reporting, as well as proactive oversight of village resources. We have a number of responsibilities, the most important being budgeting and financial reporting. Our budget and our finance report can be found online if anyone is looking to see those documents. When it comes to financial reporting, I do want to just make note of this, the village is current on all of our required financial reports and audits. The village is audited by Crowe, one of the top 10 audit firms in the nation. And we were recently awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. There's a picture of that award right there. I think that just speaks to our commitment to being transparent and accurate when dealing with the village's finances. So I do want to make mention of the financial status of the village. And this is very important, I want to say this, I want to harp on this. The village is financially stable. The village is financially stable. And there are three reasons why I say that. One of the reasons is we've had budget surpluses in each of the last two years. The second reason is, and because of those surpluses, we've been able to build an emergency reserve or a savings account for approximately $4.5 million. So, so just like in your personal homes, you want to have an emergency reserve, you know, such an amount of months of expenditures, the village does want to do the same thing. And that's where the two months of expenditures come from. And then also, our third thing and why we're financially stable is we have a balanced budget that was mentioned earlier, but our 2023 budget is balanced, our revenues do equal our expenditures. And so I just want to put this up here. This just give an illustration of the last three years of financial activity, as you can, hopefully you can see this year. But in fiscal year 2020, we had emergency reserves or savings of only $300,000. We have now grown that to fiscal year 2022 of approximately $4.583 million. So just a testament to how well we're doing financially. I do watch our budget really closely and so I want to make sure our department heads don't get carried away. I only want to use this in case of an emergency. And so that's why that, that note is there. And this just illustrates again, our financial status with our balanced general fund budget. As you can see here, our revenues are about 21, 29.1 million, equal our expenditures of about 29.1 million for the upcoming fiscal year. And again, this information can be found on the village's website. And so now the most important piece of why we're here and why I want to talk is pretty much, what are the benefits of Home Rule? I just showed you that the village has an emergency savings, we have a balanced budget, but why do we want Home Rule? And so there are five reasons why we want Home Rule and I'll kind of illustrate them for everybody and I'll take my time with this particular slide. The first reason is we want to eliminate vehicle stickers and I think that's a benefit for the residents. One, you'll be, it'll reduce the fees paid by residents and the time you spend purchasing. Now the fee, that may be nominal to some people, but the time spent purchasing it, you can't get time back no matter what. So I want to eliminate that burden on the residents and it also eliminates the burden on the village staff as well from administering that process and mailing out applications and things of that nature. The second thing I want to talk about is the eating tax. I know this is a hot topic, but if we go Home Rule, we'll be able to eliminate the eating tax. That will reduce the burden, tax burden on our residents. It'll also reduce and simplify the tax requirements for our business owners, as well as eliminate time spent by our staff administering and collecting these eating taxes. The third thing I want to talk about is we also want to replace the business district tax. So instead of having a business district tax, which is restricted to certain areas, we want to replace that with the Home Rule Sales Tax, which we can use throughout the village. I think Laverne mentioned, we can use a Home Rule Sales Tax in Old Madison. I can use it throughout the village and wherever I see a need, I can use those funds. Whereas a business district, the funds are restricted to just that area. The fourth thing, which I think hopefully everybody will see a benefit to this, we would like to freeze our property tax levy for five years. And basically this just reduces the future property tax burden on our residents and our businesses. And again, I know there's not a financial benefit for the village from that standpoint, but it will reduce the time I have to spend preparing a tax levy because it'll be really simple and straightforward. And the fifth and final thing, I have another slide that I want to talk about in regards to this, is we want to remove restrictions from hotel tax funds. And so I don't think a lot of people know this, but the village receives tax funds from hotels within our town. But because we're a non-home rule community, we can't use those tax dollars, we can only use those tax dollars to promote overnight tourism within the village. And because of that, we've built up about $3.7 million in this fund for hotel motel taxes. And I can't use that to fix streets in Old Madison or buy the community center. I can't use that to I can't use that to fund the pavement management plan, earners discuss. I can only use those funds to promote overnight tourism. And so I think that's criminal almost in my mind, that I have this amount of money, but I have such a need with repaid, repavements. And so this slide just illustrates, hey, I have $3.7 million in this fund, I cannot use it on the village-wide pavement management plan, I can't use it to beautify the streets or do the streetscape plan, or I can't even use it to increase our general fund reserves if we needed it. But if we were home rule, I could use those funds to do those things. And so that's one of the biggest things. When I first came on board in August of 2020, I noticed this fund had all these dollars, and I'm like, wait a minute, we have needs here, why can't we use these funds? And I immediately, you know, went to Anthony and the president and said, hey, is there any way we can at least try to get home rule to access some of these funds? I don't, I don't want property taxes, let's freeze property taxes, but maybe we can use some of these funds to be able to help beautify and make our community look better. And so again, I promise you, I wouldn't be here long, and so that's kind of the last slide I have, but just wanted to make sure I hit on those key points for you guys. Thank you.
Not long, he was to the point, but he also had some very good information. And I want to reiterate that hotel motel thing, it's like having a savings account at home that you can't touch. And the worst part about it is that we can't even show it as surplus. That's even worse. It's in our accounts, trust me, that money's there, but we can't even show it as surplus. I think that's very important that we state that, that we have this much money. And let me just tell you, the money grows by about a half a million dollars every single year. And let me just say, communities like Tinley Park, they use their hotel motel fund in their general fund. Communities like New Lenox, Orland, they use it. Cal City, they use their hotel motel fund, and we can't. It's just sitting there. Now, we give you all a fest every year. We give you a fest every year. That's why we do it, because we can use that money for that, but that's it. The rest of the time is just sitting in the account. So I just want to make sure we reiterate that, and to prove that we don't want, that we don't need to go after your property taxes, because we're already making the money. We're already making money. I think the board understands this very well. So Mia Carter, who's one of our wonderful consultants, is going to come up and speak before you all to talk a little bit more about home rule. Please get those questions ready, because Mia will be up here to answer questions, myself and any of our staff will be able to answer those questions that you may have. So Mia?
Hi, y'all. Y'all been sitting a long time. We done threw all types of numbers and charts and graphs, and went ahead and get up and do the hokey pokey and turn around. You done got all of that stuff tonight, and you still here. You're here because you care about this community. I know that's why you're here. You came out here to hear all these people talk. Now, me, I'm gonna have a problem, because I like to move when I talk, but I can't do that, because how people at home, I, y'all. So I can't move when I talk, so I'm gonna have to stand here. So you guys heard him introduce me as a consultant. That is not the role that most of you guys know me to be in. I did recently retire from the Village of Madison after 26 years of being here, yes? But I love this place so much, I tried to figure out a way to stay. So I am so glad that this board decided to let me stay in this capacity, so I can still be here for you and your homeowners associations, coming to your meetings, right? Helping you understand why the police department does some of the things that we do. You heard from the chief, we have a great leader, we have a great department. So I still will be here in that capacity. So I'm not leaving, right? So that, you know, I'm still here. But I decided to help with this campaign for a number of reasons. One, I believe in the power of change. What I do know is the definition of insanity, because you know it too. We can't keep doing the same thing expecting a different result. We have to figure out how to move in the direction that this world is moving in. And what we've learned from the pandemic, and it is moving in ways we don't like and in ways we do like, right? So this home rule campaign is important to me, because I believe that it can just give us more tools in the toolbox to be even greater. We're great now, because one thing I've been telling people when I come around to the meetings, Madison is not broken. We're not broken, we're not in trouble, we're not here asking you to bail us out and save us. That's not what we're doing. We're here to ask you for another tool in the toolbox. I know home rule is controversial. I know some people out here don't like it. I know most of you came because you wanted to hear exactly what it was. Maybe you didn't know what it was, so you came to find out what it was and how it will benefit you. So I hope that you heard something here that's going to inspire you to help us be a part of moving Madison to a better tomorrow. We have to do this together, because I'm gonna tell you something else I learned in my new role, because I work for the federal government now, is that we have an opportunity to do something wonderful here in this town of Madison. And I've been around to some other people's towns and villages and stuff now, and I just be looking at them like, y'all not Madison. I think y'all need to do A, B, and C. I mean, you know, we need to work together. But I'm gonna tell you another thing I hear the most, what are you going to do to fix what's wrong? That's what residents do. What are you gonna do? They call the police. What are you gonna do? And you know what I've been doing now? What are you gonna do? I know what I have the power to do, and I know who in this room has more power than me, it's you. You have the power to make this community what you want. When you've complained about things, you've wanted change, you want more this, you want more that, you want this, you want that, this is the way to get it. We need for you guys to work with us. So I'm glad that you came out so you can hear. I am going to stand up here and tell you that I want you to vote yes to home rule. But it's your vote, it's your choice. The best thing I can do is ask you to make an informed decision. Make sure that you get the facts and make the decisions that's best for you and your household. Because guess what? Madison is still gonna be fine if it don't pass, but we really need it. We need it so that we can move in a direction that will open up all these doors to what you just heard. You just heard all these department heads talk, tell you what can happen if we are a home rule community. And then you go around to these other communities, and you say, why don't we have that? Why can't we do this? Why doesn't it look like this? Why this? Why that? Why that? Well, they just gave y'all a bunch of answers. You've been in here now for an hour and a half, and you have heard all of these department heads tell you what can be gained from this. So I want to give you a marching order. I want you to walk out that door armed with information, right? Know what's going on, right? Because this wasn't just about home rule. You guys heard all the wonderful things going on in the village. So sometimes, when somebody tells you, well, I don't know, we ain't do this, we ain't do that, you might say, well, I went to the townhome meeting, and I heard Rashid Jones say that we have a balanced budget. So when you telling me Madison is broke, I'm gonna tell you that the man with the money said, we not. Right? So I love you all. I really do. If I did not believe in the power of community, I would have taken other jobs that would have taken me out of state. I didn't want to do that. I believe in this. I believe in this so much, many of y'all tried to talk me out of this, told me I was crazy when I ran for the school board, and believe me, after 26 years of law enforcement, that was the hardest thing I ever did in my whole life. Because I learned a lot about what's supposed to happen and what's not happening, and how we don't get our fair share out here, right? I need you all. The village needs you. Are we perfect? No. Can we improve in some ways? Yes. Are we trying? Yes. Do I need your input? Yes. Do I need you in my neighborhood watch program? I sure do. I'm gonna pull up the police while I'm up here. I need, I need your eyes and ears in that community to keep our community safe and wonderful. So please, arm yourself with knowledge, share something of what you learned here, and let's make Madison move it into this great place of tomorrow that everyone's talked about and work with us and support us. And ask your questions, that's what's next, that's what's coming up, your questions and answers. So you will not walk out this room not having enough knowledge to make the best informed decision that you can make. Early voting starts June 13th, so if you're not registered to vote, y'all hurry up, because you know, you ain't got much time. I don't know if voter registration's over now that I said that, but early voting starts June 13th, and Election Day is June 28th. So please, I know y'all see all these commercials back and forth about the governor's race, and it's getting on my whole nerve, but this is an important time. Sometimes we don't get our fair share because we don't do what we're supposed to do. If you gonna complain, be a part of the solution. Help us, okay? So I'll be here doing the question and answer phase, I'll be out here in the lobby when you leave, if you want to ask something, you know, I'm here. If you did not get my delicious home rule for Madison cookies, I hope that you stop by that table and get one, because there, I can't eat it, I'd be in diabetic coma. But if you, if you don't have a sugar problem, then get your cookie out there on the way out. So, yeah, they sugar-free, no sugar-free, trust me. Are we ready for, are y'all ready for Q and A? Right? This, the last part is Q and A.
Thank you. Now, you see why we kept her. We gotta keep her, because she's wonderful to this community, and she's not going nowhere. Retired and all, she's staying here. Chief Jones, Rashid, Laverne, if you all don't mind, because some of these questions you're gonna have to answer, so I want to make sure you all are up here earnest. Actually, Gordon, you might want to come up here too, because some of these might be yours too, so I want to make sure you're up here also. Because some of these questions are some pretty good questions. Let me just make sure before I start the question, emphasize, our elected officials, there's seven, there's eight of them here, eight elected officials here. Okay, all y'all raise your hand, is our elected official for the Village of Madison? Oh, those two, and him too, yeah. They all live in the Village of Madison. Want to make sure I say that. They all live here. Every last one of them live here. And I say that because that means that they care about what we do to your taxes too, because it's their taxes are affected also. So that's why it's easy for us to make sure that they don't do that to your taxes. So I want to make sure I point that out to you all, because they don't live in some other city and raise your taxes here. They live here too. All right. So one of the first questions, and actually, Ernest, this question was directed to you. It says, Mr. Roberts, are these plans to follow through the completed parks in subdivisions like Trinity Creek that were promised and deeded to the village by the developer? I think this is a good one, for home rule, what can home rule do about places like Trinity Creek, other parks?
Thank you, Mr. Burton. So a lot of the, a lot of the plans that we had originally, that we had issues with in 2008, 2009, that did a crash, a lot of these developments are coming back. So home rule basically gives us the opportunity to have more leverage as far as how we deal with development, how we deal with development agreements, as well as diversity in the workforce too as well. A lot of these projects are multimillion dollar projects, and also it gives us an opportunity to complete these subdivisions, to make sure that the complete streets and everything that we talked about earlier gets included in these plans. And again, as well as just having us having ironclad ordinances that we would be able to hold developers' feet to the fire as they're developing these properties, and to make sure that they're doing right by this village. We also, I just want to point out, I didn't mention earlier, that we have updated our building codes to 2018 building codes, and a lot of communities are still a dozen years behind. And that's very critical, as you know, with the different storms that we've had and different things that have occurred, our wind speed loads, our structural capacity, our safe rooms for major developments like Amazon has been reinforced. So I just want to say that we're definitely up to speed on all of our codes, on everything that we have as far as all the developments are concerned, and as far as home rule is concerned, it's all a plus, because it gives us more teeth to enforce these ordinances accordingly.
Thank you, let me. Absol- sure. Right. So, so let me ask, I'm gonna ask everybody, please make sure we ask all questions on cards, because I'm coming from the crowd, it's not going to make this productive. But I will answer that for you, though. With the funding that we now will see an uptick on, now, stuff that happened years ago, unfortunately, I can't go, really go back to solve those problems, but I can tell you moving forward, last year, we received $450 million from the state of Illinois, $450,000, I'm sorry, $450,000 from the state of Illinois, right? Thousand dollars from the state of Illinois, something like, right? To fund our parks in the Village of Madison. So right now, we just completed six parks in the Village of Madison. So with that, with that funding, now the additional funding we get from home rule will allow us to take on those other parks, streets, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, that were not completed years ago. With home rule, we now have a, we're past that $4.6 million in reserves, and now we can do so many more things like parks in Trinity Creeks, like the parks in other areas like Newberry, like I think Ridge Manor has some areas, and Clinical Trail has some areas that need to be improved. We're aware of them, it's just that we need the funding to help us get to those things. It may seem basic, but because we were in, we were behind in the past, we've caught up now, now we just want to get even further, so we can get even further ahead. Sure, so, so the parks that we did, we did Memorial Park, we did Governor's Trail, we did Oakwood, Woodgate, Alamon, and Notre Dame. Am I correct though? Okay, Notre Dame. So all brand new park equipment in all those parks, the good thing is that this funding now, we don't have to use other funds to pay for those parks, now we can use other funds to pay for parks like Trinity Creek. Yep. So the next question, I've heard a lot of, and I'm gonna paraphrase, I've heard from many about speaking about the community's doing well, expanding financial position, yet emphasis on home rule just to meet basic structural needs. So what can we do about that? And I think that's a Rashid question. Let me just tell you, and I, maybe I'll just go ahead and answer. We're in a financial position now that we do have to take care of, because those things were left behind in the past. There were roads, and I can admit, there were roads that were not done for many years. The MFT fund was not as healthy as it is today. The, all of our funds were not as healthy. Now we can do more roads. Last year, we did, how many, how many roads we do last year? A dozen roads last year, 1.3 million? 1.2 million last year in road improvements last year. This year, we're doing six, 500? About $500,000 worth of road improvement this year, plus we got some funding from other sources like 207 Street, that's about a $2 million project. They're gonna do the entire 207 Street this year. So there's things that we're doing, we're catching up, it's gonna take time though. But what home rule does, it speeds the process. It speeds up the process, and we're not waiting years from now to get these things done. You know, they had a second question. What other majority African American, African American communities have home rule? So I don't think, let me see, Hazel Crest, yes, quite a few, it's quite a few, but we're different. And I'm gonna say this, I want to emphasize this when I say we're different. Madison last year, there's very few communities that has a position that we have. Last year, Madison made 700, and I'm going to emphasize it, $750 million in retail sales last year. That's a fact. That is a fact. We made $750 million in retail sales last year. We were creeping up to a time when we were making that kind of money years ago. We had dropped down to probably around $550 million, am I correct? In retail sales at one point. We're back up to, and just let me tell you, with Amazon, everybody emphasizes, Amazon sales, we get. I want to, Sam's Club sales, although it's an e-commerce center, we get. So we have two things that most communities don't have. We have two major distribution centers in our town, and we get the sales tax dollars. So it puts us in a remarkable position, and with home rule, and I'll use two cities, Moni and Markham have home rule, and they have Amazons in their cities. They're gonna get home rule sales tax on those sales also from people outside of their city. I'll just say, I'll just use that and just let you know that, we get the sales tax from those two big entities. So, and those entities make money way bigger than Lincoln Mall ever did. So one of the questions, and this might be a Mike Jones question, how will home rule impact mobile homes owners? I live in trendy mobile home, mobile park. I don't know if I have an answer for that, other than, I don't know, security, but they helping security anyway?
Wow, I don't think that it will.
Um, wow, I don't think that, that it will affect mobile homes unless there's a rental aspect to it, which helps us, uh, you know, uh, are aware of what's going on in those homes. But in terms of anything else with mobile homes, I, I don't think it's gonna affect it at all.
So, they want us to be more specific on what can happen and what can trustees legislate on with Home Rule. Um, and basically be more specific on legislation. So, let me just make sure I say this to everyone here too. If Home Rule is passed, if Home Rule is passed, the village board can vote on, will have the ability, and I will say this, they will have the ability to vote on more things, it expands their ability to make decisions, period. That is a, a hundred percent fact. And I wanna make sure I say that because I don't want anyone to think that that is not the truth. That is the truth. It will expand our board's ability to make decisions. But I will say this, when it comes to our board doing certain things, it's, some things still have to come back before you, before it's voted on. So, if they decide today or tomorrow that they're gonna rescind the decision to get rid of, of property taxes or freeze property taxes, they have to come back before a board meeting to, to do that. If they decide to do, to raise taxes, they still have to come back before the people to raise the taxes. They still have to come before the board and make a decision to raise taxes. And that's when you come out and you say, that's not what you said. You said you weren't gonna do this and you need to come out and say, don't do what you said you were not gonna do. And I think it's important, the next thing I wanna say to you is, if Home Rule is passed and they renege on you, and again, I'm, I'm saying this, I, because I'm on their side, I wanna make sure I don't say, because I am on their side. But if they renege on you, you have every single right to vote it back down. You can vote it back down. One, one specific? Sure, sure. I, I'm gonna start with the, we're right, right now this hotel. I think this is part. Okay, okay. So, right, so, so the board, sure, exactly. So, we have a cap on the ability to, uh, so even though we got, and I'll just say this, Rashid, you don't mind if I say this, we have 26 million, I can say that? 26 million in the bank, can I say that? 25? Okay, all right, all right. All right, on any given day, we have 25, 26 million dollars in the bank, on any given day, which means that we have the ability to borrow, that, to, to, to actually spend money. Because we're non-Home Rule, we can't go and do five extra streets this year on money that's in our bank account. Because, because we're non-Home Rule, they say you can only spend this money here and you can't use any, any money that you know you're gonna get in the future to do more roads. Business districts, another good example that was talked about, we have a business district in this area right here, where we at right now. That money can only be used in this area. With Home Rule, they can make a decision to use that money in historic Madison to do their roads. Or they can say, we're gonna build our new train, our train station, we're gonna build our train station, make it look better. They can now take that money over there, but right now, that money, and Laverne, help me, how much money do we have on, 2.5 million in business district every year? 2.5, that's restrict, 2.5 million every year in business district fund, that's restricted. We wanna take that restriction off. We get it, we already get the money, but it's restricted. By state law. That's right. That's it, yep. Yep, okay, I got you. Good question, great question. You know, some of these questions about street repair, um, Gordon or, or Ernest, you wanna come get street repair, they get questions about what's gonna happen with street repair, but also parking lots in some of our strip centers.
Okay, so that sound like a two-part question, so let me address the streets first, as we reiterated before. One of the critical things was, again, we talked about the pavement management plan and we also talked about with Home Rule, we'll be able to have additional funding to say, do a dozen streets a year and to put it on a rotational basis. And so, that's pretty straightforward, but you have to have the plan first. So, we already have that first piece in place. As far as some of the, uh, the strip malls, I guess is what they were talking about and some of those issues, we have, uh, fined them, uh, the, the delinquent ones that are, uh, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, uh, we have millions of dollars of fines right now. And, uh, we're trying to collect that so we can improve, uh, those locations. Uh, again, we, as was mentioned by Ms. Murphy earlier, uh, you know, we have one over, you know, one, uh, area that, uh, has just been a problem. And so, you know, we're, we're basically, uh, doing fines, we're doing liens, we're doing everything we need to do, uh, to make sure that the village can recoup some of that money to be able to put that back into roads and, as well as parking lots too as well. So, we have already, our code enforcement team has done a great job, uh, with that, so, um, to answer the question, thank you.
So, this next question, is Home Rule more attractive to businesses because of infrastructure improvements versus less attractive due to more business scrutiny requiring business to do better maintenance, um, of their, maintaining of their community relationships, neighborhood, friendliness, et cetera? So, basically, I think what he's trying to say is, is Home Rule more attractive to business because of, um, the infrastructure improvements? So.
Um, absolutely. So, infrastructure is definitely attractive to a developer, because infrastructure can be very costly. And this is where incentives come into play, because as a public-private partnership, we can subsidize some of that infrastructure that is needed for future development. And so, to answer your question, as I've stated, infrastructure can be very attractive to developers. And again, we'll go back to these boundaries for our different various incentives throughout the community. If there is a particular project that's with, not within one of our incentives, our business districts, our TIFs, then we're, we're locked. We cannot partner with that developer in order to incentivize them for infrastructure costs, which could be very costly to a developer. I mean, you're speaking in tunes of when you have to expand the, the water main line to a, a land or the sewer and things, and utilities, those things are very expensive with, um, a development. And so, also too, I want to iterate that if you are interested in any of the plans that we've talked about, the comprehensive plan, the street skate plan, the economic development land use of economic development land use and master plan, uh, all of those plans can be found on our website, um, as well. And also, we'll do the PowerPoint, which you can find online as well. Thank you.
So, this question is not quite a Home Rule question, but I, I think it's, it's good that I can, that this question is asked, because I don't think that it's really a, a true issue in Madison from what we, we see. Um, what can be done to reduce the gun shooting and violence? Um, so, Chief Jones, um, and then what are our violent stats from last year and this year?
Um, I don't have the stats on hand, but we do file under, uh, what used to be called Uniform Crime Reporting, is now called National Incident Base Reporting. If you look up under the FBI website, you can actually put in, uh, the Village of Madison. I will compare our stats with any other community around here. I think we do a great job. I hate and I care and it, and it bothers me so much when I get that phone call in the middle of the night and then I have to call Mr. Burton in the middle of the night and then, then he has to call, uh, President Sheila Thomas-Curren in the middle of the night. What, what can be done, what have we done? I touched on that before, we have been working with the village board to increase the amount of officers. Our numbers are based on a population of 20,000, but I'm gonna coin a term that, that, uh, Mr. Burton coined, is we're a small city with big city problems. If you look at other towns that have 20,000 residents, they don't have, uh, hotels like Holiday Inn and Hampton Inn that bring in hundreds and hundreds of more people. They don't have, uh, car dealerships that are getting burglarized and, and, and people trying to steal cars. They don't have all these other things. So, there are often times where I, I have, have mentioned to our board, we need more officers, we need more officers. I've, I've been saying this for, for eight, 10 years and they have heard us. And I think with Home Rule, this opens, opens up the coffers of the hotel motel tax, which, uh, Rashid Jones had said they can only use for tourism. Well, how about use that for officers when they're bringing in more, more, uh, potential problems? And every time that, uh, Laverne says, we're, we're bringing in an Amazon and, and we're, it's gonna have 2,500 jobs, and I, I worry about 2,500 more problems. Um, so, we have enacted, uh, 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 efforts to increase our, our manpower. Um, our officers are, are required to do business checks and foot patrols as well as traffic stops. There are, we, we, and adopted a smarter policing, uh, 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 standard where we implemented the LPRs that tell us when stolen cars are coming down so that we can reduce the crime that are potentially committed. And I think you saw that in the statistics with the stolen cars. Crime is gonna happen and unfortunately, with us being a destination, that's gonna attract a lot of good people that are gonna spend money here. Uh, the Humane Society is gonna bring people from, from several counties over to adopt pets, but it's also gonna attract predators and that's unfortunate, especially when we have one of the, uh, highest household incomes. So, that means we have to be more visible and vigilant and increase, like the board has done, increase investment into our security infrastructure, which is what we have done.
So, this question, um, Home Rule was soundly defeated when it was, when it last, um, came up in the village, why should we do it now? Um, so, the last time Home Rule came up in the village, um, it was, it was defeated by a 51 to 49% vote. It's not, that's not widely defeated. It was extremely close. And, and if you look at it, approximately 40 individuals would've voted the other direction, it would've went the other way. It wasn't that widely defeated. It was defeated, but it wasn't widely defeated. So, I will say that we're at a position right now where it's obvious that people understood it last time, and I think that we're doing a, a, a good job to make sure you understand it even better this time. But we've also this time, what I believe, we're giving you way more facts. We're giving you things that, you know, and how, what we gonna do with it? What, how's it gonna affect you? When Rashid talk about those roads and streets and, and street skate, that's the kind of stuff we wanna make sure we emphasize. It's not about the Village of Madison pouring money into our coffers, because we're, we're doing okay in a sense, but we need to make sure we can do those things faster and at a better pace for you all in the future. So, no, it wasn't widely defeated, it was so close. It was so, so close. Um, 49 to 51 is extremely close. Um, but it puts us on a different trajectory than where we are without Home Rule. Madison goes to a different level. And, and, and we can compete with the New Lennoxes and the Frankfords and the, and the Tenley Parks and those people, and as Mike mentioned, we are a small city, 19,000. Those cities have, you know, um, Tenley Park and, and Orland, they have 60 and 70,000 people in their town, but yet we have to compete with them. And so, it puts us in a much better position to compete with just about anyone. So, it is, it is 9:09 and I really wanna make sure I can get to a few more questions. Is that okay? I just wanna make sure, because I get to a few more questions. Is that okay? Oh, the game is on. I, I, I'll do, I'll, we'll do two more questions and then we'll, what I, what, that was what I will do for you all. Every question in here, we're gonna categorize and we're gonna put it on our website to make sure that we can categorize every single question, so everywhere, and we're gonna try to do it this week, maybe early next week at the latest, to make sure we get it out there before you need, so you can get your answers. So, I will say we're gonna do that, but I'm gonna do two more questions just so we can get through this. Um, so, one person asks, wanna know straight up, what are the cons to Home Rule? And, and, and I think that's, that's a, actually a valid question to ask, what's the cons to, um, Home Rule? And let me just say, there's, there's probably the biggest two cons to Home Rule, and, and I'm gonna say is, the, the village will raise my property taxes, that is usually a con, and then the, the second one is typically transfer stamps will be created. The village is gonna create sales, transfer sale stamps. So, let me just say, let me just tell you guys, what a transfer stamp is, there's a tax that when you go to buy and sell your homes, they'll put it on top of it so that you have to have to pay a tax for that reason. This board, this board decided two things they were gonna do. They were gonna freeze your property taxes for five years at the current rate, freeze them, five years. They also agreed that they were going, they also passed, huh? Our portion, right, right, our portion of taxes, right? Because we can't do nothing about the schools, but we can't freeze our portion. The second thing they agreed to do is they agreed and they passed a resolution several months ago that they will not now or in the future create a, a real estate transfer stamp. This board did that. So, I know for sure that will not happen to you. On top of freezing your property taxes, they also agreed that, so right now legally, we can raise your taxes every year by basically the, the cost of living, basically by cost of living. And it's, it's, you know, PTL, cost of living, basically what it is. But, we agree that even for the next five years after the first five years, that we will not go above PTL for the next five years. This board passed a resolution saying that, because they know, because they know that the funds that we're gonna get from people coming into Madison are gonna weigh our pace touching your taxes, so. And so, I think I asked, I answered both of those questions about after five years and that kind of stuff, so those both were answered. Um, and then, will Home Rule assist HOAs in the village to lower assessments since the money will be better benefit the village? Unfortunately, um, HOAs are private. They're, they're private, that, that's, that's, that's your HOA. The village does not have any jurisdiction over HOAs. Um, we can, we'll be able to system better, because now the village can now have the ability to, to put things in place like, um, dealing with squatters, dealing with people who are, are invading your community. So, we will be able to deal with those things, but we will not be able to actually help benefit, or pay for HOAs. And then, this question, will the Home Rule affect the allocation of business large to offset the taxes that residents pay? I don't know, Rashida. Taxes on, on large business, will it offset the residential taxes? And I, I don't know, Home Rule.
I think one of the biggest things we do wanna mention is because we have the Amazon facility and the Sam's Club facilities, they, they're planning to bring in a ton of, uh, extra sales tax dollars. And so, if we have a Home Rule sales tax, we'll be able to add that in addition to the sales tax we already collect from those, uh, businesses, which is why we're able to freeze the property taxes for five, five years and, and limit it for the next five years. So, again, like Anthony mentioned, uh, for the first five years, we'll freeze it so it won't be any increases. And then after that, we'll, um, limit it to PTL, which is what we're currently restricted to as a non-Home Rule unit. So, it'll be just like we're non-Home Rule for the five years subsequent to the first five years. So, you'll get 10 years of basically, uh, low tax increases, no tax increases or then limited tax increases.
And, and, and let me just say, good question, very good question, because you know what? This is only, the reason why we feel so confident about this is because the village sees what the other potentials we have. Um, we're, we're, we're very unique as a city. I mean, I say that all the time, we're a unique city. We have the ability, I mean, 700, and take it lightly, but 750 million dollars in retail sales is not small change. We've had some losses, we've, I mean, look, we, we got some bad spots in our town, we got some places we still need to develop, but 750 million and we still have bad spots? There's very few communities in the entire South Suburban Region that makes 750 million dollars in retail sales. So, because of timing, I said I'll ask two more questions. Um, I, I do, I will definitely wanna thank everyone. Before we do leave, I do wanna bring back up President Sheila Thomas-Curren to do a closing. We gotta definitely close the meeting, but I will guarantee everybody, we will put all this into a catalog and we will definitely put it on our website, um, both our Home Rule website and our village website, all right? Thank you.
Thank you all for being so patient. We had so many, uh, individuals up and we believe that we've given you enough information, but you can still contact the village hall with additional questions and we will make sure that those questions are answered. So, at this time, I know it's a game waiting. This concludes tonight's, uh, town hall meeting. We have a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Satchel. Second by trustee Meeks. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you so much, we are adjourned, thank you.
Everyone, staff will be sticking around, if you have any questions, staff will be sticking around.